We'll do the roll call. Mike Bullier. Mike Sharon. Joe Coletti.
Joe Coletti, Hebron.
Kirsten Erlinson. Pam Farrington.
Pam Farrington, Marlboro.
Carrie Ferolino. Drew Golfen.
Drew Golfen, Marlboro.
Gabe Marks.
Gabe Marks, Hebron.
Amy Romancheck.
Amy Romancheck, Marlboro.
Scott Soyet.
Scott Soyet, Andover.
Heather Summer from Hebron. And if we could all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Don, can you note that, um, Mike Bullier's here? Does he have to say his town? I think you have to say your town, Mike. Nicely done. Okay. All right, so. For the record, Hebron, Andover, and Marlboro, community engagement and attendance at BOE public meetings is welcome. The public comment segment of the meeting agenda is set aside so the BOE may receive public comments. Procedurally, public remarks will be limited to three minutes, and citizens will be asked to identify themselves. Because the BOE is limited by the Freedom of Information Act to discussing only matters on the agenda, the BOE is not permitted to engage in the discussion of the comments presented. Is there anybody that would like to make public comment? Anybody online? Nope, we're good.
I think we need to set this to music.
Okay.
Excuse me, this is Kirsten, excuse me. This is Kirsten Erlinson from Andover. I've arrived just, just prior to making that announcement.
Thank you, Kirsten. Okay. And then, just a question of. Does anybody have any agenda items they would like to add or delete?
I think we should add, do we have to add setting graduation date? Or is that?
That's, that's, it's in the agenda.
Okay.
It is in the agenda, but thanks, Joe.
Okay, so next up are the student representative reports. Eva, do you want to go first?
Yeah, sure. So, um, we just came back from our February break a week ago, so that was great. We had Monday and Tuesday off, and that Friday before was a half day. This week, seniors will have their senior portfolio presentations. So on Friday, that will happen, March 1st, at the end of the school day. And, um, the blood drive, March 14th, will be happening. So, uh, students will be able to donate blood and, um.
So tomorrow is the unified basketball game, which I'm very excited about. Parent-teacher conferences are coming up, um, weekend next week. This Friday, um, parallel to the seniors, there's a junior planning meeting. And this, we plan for secondary planning, um, just this Friday, March 1st. And then, um, on March 6th, the ninth grader, single PS18.
Great, thank you. Does anybody have any questions? Actually, do you know, how does the student, the senior project work?
So, um, we actually started it like a long, like, beginning of the year. It was, like, the actual, like, presentation was due today, where we created, like, a slide for each, um. It was like, you know, the columns that we have, it was one of those, like, characteristics, it was like integrity, um. There was, uh. I don't want to remember integrity right now.
I put you on the spot, I'm sorry.
Like eight or so, um, and then you had to provide examples that, like, showed how you, um, like, displayed those different, um, aspects of learning into, like, your high school experience. So you would, like, maybe put an essay, and you would say that was, like, critical thinking, or you would say that you, like, had, like, a job outside of school, and that was an example of, um, like, integrity, maybe. And then you would explain, like, why those things connected to those different characteristics. And then there were, like, two other slides, it was like how high school, um, is affecting your, like, affecting your, like, post-high school plans, and, um, people who inspired you, and, um, basically just how, like, you transgressed through, like, throughout your high school journey, and you improved and developed as a person.
If I could help you a little.
Yeah.
So the, uh, the skills, basically what Ava's describing are the skills and dispositions of a Ram graduate.
Yes, thank you.
I'm here for the same, no problem. So, um, we're gonna, it's a great segue, because we're gonna talk about it tonight when, um, when we discuss the strategic plan that was developed over the past several months, um, which, so the, uh, the skills and dispositions were developed probably over about a year-long process, I think, in the 18, 19 school year. And basically, it just identifies exactly that, the skills and dispositions that we will, that we hope to see in Ram graduates. I, I, I don't talk about it later, but the important thing is to note that we start working on these goals here at Ram, at the middle school level, and we are actually now even coordinating with the elementary schools that feed into Ram. And the administration and staff working at those schools is starting to work on, um, starting at the ground level with our elementary industry, it's a wonderful thing. So it truly is a culmination of a deep, integral experience.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else have any questions for them? Okay, so that brings us to the BOE chair report. We had a group of students who graduated mid-year and celebrated here at the school on February 22nd. The graduates were joined by their family, friends, and Ram staff in the high school library to celebrate the occasion. I was not able to attend, um, but I, I did talk to Colin about it. All of these students do, even though they've graduated, will get to participate in all of their, um, senior activities, and they will also be able to participate in graduation, so real accomplishment to, um, graduate early like that.
Yeah. How many were there? Four. Oh, wow.
Um, the high school cheer team won the CCC Division Eastern Conference title at Southington High School two weekends ago. They built on that success this past weekend at the NECA Cheerleading Competition that was in Tallent. They have one, well, I say they have one more, because I'm tired of sitting on bleachers. One more, the states are this weekend, that they will be competing at in New Haven. If they do win states, if they rank in the top three, they will go on to another competition. And I do wish them well, but there's been a lot of bleachers. So, uh, just wanted to remind you that the Ram Medical Career Students, along with teacher Kathy Green, are hosting a blood drive at the, which you, you mentioned, at the high school on March 14th, from 7:30 to 1:00. So if you are interested in donating blood, you can talk to Colin, and he can get you signed up. Um, Colin has been doing his roadshow with the budget. So he's been meeting with the boards of selectmen for each of the three towns. He presented to Marlboro last Wednesday night. Hebron is scheduled for Tuesday, March 12th, at 7:00 PM, Douglas Library. And Andover is on Wednesday, March 13th, at a virtual meeting starting at 7:00. If anybody from those towns has the availability to go and, or dial, zoom in to support Colin, I think it really helps to have those representatives from the towns there when he's, um, presenting on the budget. And then the last thing is, I got a meeting notice, I think it was today.
Yeah, we're out today.
For next Monday, we're, we are going to be meeting with our lawyers to go through roles and responsibilities of the board members. We are, we, Colin, I think, is hosting our little dinner.
I'm cooking, cooking all day.
So we'll have a, um, a quick meal before, just time we can, um, network. And then Jessica will be doing, kind of, what are the roles and responsibilities of a board member, so that we can make sure that we, you know, stay in our lanes and not, um, get, get out of line on what, what we're supposed to be doing. So I hope everybody can make it. That will be an in-person only meeting, there will not be a link to that.
So, uh, super excited about being at the grad, uh, the mid-year graduation last week, and was certainly excited to hear about the success of the cheerleaders. On the topic of, uh, high school athletics, we are entering into tournament season for boys' basketball, girls' basketball. We actually just had some success that I'd like to share with the board and the public. The Ram High School Wrestling Team, uh, recently won the Class M Championship. Board members may recall the end of last year's season. It was a bit of a debacle. We ended up having a point deducted. We, one of our, uh, our team had a point deducted in the last match, which ended up costing us the Class M Championship last year. So personally, I consider the Ram Wrestling Team to be back-to-back state champs. That's just my opinion, and I will tell you that I'm, uh, I'm a, my, my son was a wrestling kid, and I'm tuned into some wrestling, some friends with wrestling coaches, and I will tell you that across the landscape of Connecticut and in the world of wrestling, I think most people consider us to be back-to-back Class M champs. The team did have, uh, three individual state champs coming out of the Class M Tournament, Ben Fornier, Kyle Courier, and Gavin Plord. They competed this past weekend at the State Open Championship, along with other Ram wrestlers who placed high enough in the Class M Tournament to qualify. And, uh, they, uh, again, went and competed this weekend down in New Haven, and, uh, coming out of the, the state tournament, Ben Fornier, uh, took third place in his weight class in the state open, which means, so he competes against wrestlers from all size schools, Class M, Class S, Class L, Class Double L. So certainly an accomplishment for Ben. I also want to, uh, recognize and congratulate, uh, we had some Ram middle school students who participated for the first time, uh, in the Connecticut Middle School Science Bowl. There were five students in seventh and eighth grade who participated in the competition. Oliver Union, um, Marcus Parker, Nicholas Peach, Maisie Lemay, Nico Ulian, and Adam Grazwaz. The Ram competitors were recognized as the best new team to compete and placed 19th overall. So certainly, uh, great, and we're hopeful that, uh, they will continue to, uh, compete in this. Again, it was the first time doing it, I hope it won't be the last. Our music department showcased, uh, the talents of our Ram middle school and high school students on Thursday, February 1st. The, uh, middle school jazz band, chorus, and band all performed, as did the high school jazz band. I was able to, uh, attend that performance, uh, and it was fantastic. Jazz is one of my favorite music forms, and these kids show amazing talent at a very early age. It was great. Three Ram High School architectural design students, Angel Luis, Alex Peeling, and Julia Tedosio, designed and built model homes and brought them to the Home Builders Association Student Home Design Competition, which was held earlier this month at the Connecticut Convention Center. What students had to do was design and build a three-bedroom model home that could not exceed 2,000 square feet of floor space. So, some pretty cool stuff that our kids are doing and showing off some, some, a variety of talents. Finally, I just want to mention, uh, our seven high school, uh, students who recently compete, were accepted into the Connecticut Music Educators Association All-State Ensembles. We had Olivia Carey for the French horn, Giovanni Assunto for clarinet, Alana Calhoun alto, Matty Graves trumpet, Caitlin Hoban soprano, Janina Howard soprano, and Alexa Odey timpani. And that concludes my report.
Uh, yeah, you're, you're next annual audit.
So, um, as the board knows, we have an, uh, an audit conducted annually of our budget, and that audit is shared with the board members in February, and so we are at that point in the year. So I'm going to turn it over to Eva, who's going to introduce our auditors, who have a brief presentation for us.
So our auditors are PKF, Connor Davies, Catherine Patnott, who are our partners for, um, our audit. And Professor John Long.
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, hello. So everyone, this is Catherine.
Hello, um, like Eva said, I'm Catherine Patnott, I'm the partner, um, from PKF, Connor Davies, and I'm just gonna run through, um, some highlights of the audit, and then if there's any questions, I can take them at the end. For the reports that you received, there is the AFFR, or the Annual Financial Report, as well as the federal and state single audit. The opinion on the financial statements was an unmodified opinion or a clean opinion. Management's Discussion and Analysis, which is at the beginning of the financial statements, is a good executive summary of the fiscal year operations. It includes financial highlights on government-wide and fund financial statements. It talks about the general fund, including some significant budgetary highlights, which we'll get into a little bit later. It talks about each major fund and the operating results, which include, other than the general fund, the capital improvement fund, which fund balance increased by 114,000, and the capital nonrecurring fund, which fund balance increased 504,000. It also talks about capital assets and long-term debt. For capital assets, you had additions of 2.2 million, about half of which was from the parking lot, um, of a million dollars, which was primarily funded by a grant. And long-term debt decreased by 1.1 million due to the debt service payments. Your general fund on a GAAP basis is found on Exhibit C and D, which includes the assigned fund balance of 2,314,655, as well as the net change in fund balance of an increase of 736,991. The footnotes give you more detail of what's in the financial statements. One to point out is just an adjustment for GASB number 96, which was implemented this year for intangible right-to-use subscription assets and the subscription liability. It was a pretty small increase of 66,539. The general fund on the budgetary basis is found on RSIs 1A and 1B. Your revenues were under budget by 207,000, primarily due to intergovernmental, mostly due to the excess cost grant. Intergovernmental revenues were below budget by 184,000. Your other financing sources included an appropriation of fund balance of 702,941. This was, um, an appropriation of the fiscal '22 surplus, that was transferred into the capital nonrecurring fund. For expenditures and other financing uses, those were under budget by 1.6 million, primarily composed of central services by 850,000, the operation and maintenance of plant of 242,000, and transportation of 200,000. For the single audits, um, for both federal and state, we had no findings or question costs. For federal, we tested the child nutrition cluster and the special education cluster. And for state, we tested the adult education and Medicaid programs. We also provided communication with those charged with governance, which discusses our responsibility, which is to form and express an opinion about whether the financial statements are presented fairly in all material respects. It also discusses that we are independent of the district, and it discusses any adjustments. And we had no uncorrected misstatements and no material adjustments. We also like to communicate any new applicable GASB statements. The only one upcoming is GASB 101 on compensated absences. This will be effective for fiscal year 2025. This one just updates the recognition and measurement guidance for that liability. We haven't evaluated the effect, but it only affects the government-wide financials on Exhibits A and B. And our one recommendation this year was on competitive quotations. To just consider the full scope of the project and request competitive quotes when the full project is expected to be above 10,000 or complete a waiver versus, um, having it come in piecemeal, and maybe a payment to a vendor for one project is over the $10,000 threshold. So that's all I have for you, and I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Could you repeat that last, the recommendation you just made?
Sure. Um, so our recommendation was to consider the full scope of the project. Actually, let me pull up the full. So your purchasing policy states that competitive price quotations should be requested for all goods or services that are expected to involve an expenditure of at least $10,000. During the audit, we noticed there was a purchase that was just below the $10,000 threshold, and then subsequent invoices on that project that increased the total project amount above the competitive quote threshold. So our recommendation is to try to consider the full scope of the project and request competitive quotes if the whole project's supposed, expected to be over 10,000. Otherwise, um, maybe obtaining a waiver, um, from the quotation, just complete that and document it.
So, so I could, uh, I, I could just speak to the, to the recommendation that's being provided, which is certainly a good one. I discussed this, actually, with the finance subcommittee when we had our meeting several weeks ago. What ended up happening is, in the wake of the incident that happened last year at the high school, we engaged with a, um, a company that came in and provided services, professional development for staff, facilitated a workshop for parents and community members about diversity, equity, and inclusion. Initially, the scope of the work would, uh, in our district was going to be under the $10,000, as she described that. I had obtained two quotes, um, and met with three different companies. Unfortunately, I was never given a third quote from that third company. I got a quote from two of the three companies that I met with, and we ended up going with one of them, and then the scope of the work trickled, didn't trickle, went above the $10,000 threshold that we're supposed to get those competitive quotes. So I will certainly own that misstep, uh, it was something that we had done in response to that very serious incident that took place here.
Does anybody else have any questions?
I, I do. I have a couple terms. I read through this, I have a hard time reading through it. I'm afraid you guys are there with lawyers about readability in the text. I, I, just a couple terms. Uh, one, the summary statement, statement of net positions talks about deferred inflow of resources. What, what does that entail?
Deferred inflow is, it's essentially like a liability. The governmental accounting standards board, I think, sometimes goes a little crazy with their, um, changing terminology and everything. I personally thought it was much simpler when it was just assets and liabilities. But it, it's essentially a liability. So it's, uh, something that is just going to eventually get amortized into, um, the, the income statement.
Okay. My next one was intangible right-to-use assets.
So that, I believe that one is.
That's in the statement of net positions, government activity statement.
Yes. So that would be the, I believe, the subscription, um, arrangements. So it's just, you have, um, software subscriptions that are, for a period of, say, three years, that basically is getting treated like a lease. So that's what that is.
Okay, that makes sense. I, I actually should have understood that as a computer person, but. And Exhibit E is talking about reconciliation, reconciliation of the statement revenues, et cetera, of government funds to statement activities. Is government funds just because we are a governmental organization, or is there some external agency we're talking about there?
It, it's, um, governmental accounting, there's two different bases of accounting. Your Exhibits A and B are on the full accrual basis, and then Exhibits C and D are on the modified accrual basis. So E is just reconciling the full accrual to the modified accrual between Exhibits B and D.
Oh, boy.
Yes.
I think I'll have to look that one up a little more, but, um, last one was, uh, just an abbreviation, OPEB?
OPEB, um, other post-employment benefit, other post-employment benefits. So it's the health insurance that teachers, once they're retired, are able to stay on your health insurance. Even if they're paying the full cost, there is a liability that's associated with that.
That's it for me, thank you.
Actually, Heather, I have, had a follow-up to partially answer your questions, okay?
Yeah, excellent.
So, yeah, I'm looking at page 53 of the report, and you mentioned the 702,941 dollars that was surplus from the prior year that was put into nonrecurring CIP. And I'm curious about its treatment relative to revenue and expense. So it goes into the final budget as revenue, but it never appears as actual. But it does appear as an actual expense. How come it's treated that way?
It's, those, the way the budgetary basis is. So because the transfer out is coming from last year's surplus, it's coming out of your fund balance. So when we have, we show the budget, the budget itself needs to balance the revenues and the expenditures, but the actual column obviously doesn't have to balance. And the 702,000 appropriation of fund balance isn't a revenue because you already have it in your fund balance. If that made sense.
Okay, but it was spent. Because it's in the actual expenditures.
Yes, so it was, it was unspent in fiscal '22, and then essentially it was spent by transferring it over to the capital nonrecurring fund.
That's an interesting treatment. Okay, yeah, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody else? Anybody online have a question, comment? We're good. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
That brings us to, um, approval of minutes, the minutes from the January 22nd, 2024 meeting.
Second.
Okay, that was Scott Soyet that, um, Don, that moved to approve him, and Gabe Marks seconded. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passed. Okay, we have the minutes from the January 29th, 2024 meeting. It's enclosure 9.1B. We have a motion to approve the minutes from the special budget workshop.
I'll make the motion. I'll second.
Okay, so, uh, John, Joe Coletti made the motion, and Scott Soyet, um, seconded. Any discussion?
What's in the packet is actually missing the page that came out later, so I don't know if we have to mention that.
It was actually in the printed packet that was delivered, that you didn't receive. But what got scanned and uploaded somehow skipped a page.
Right.
We did end up actually changing it once you brought it to my attention. Yeah, so it just, it was a weird thing, the computer didn't pick it up when they got scanned, but thank you.
And Mike, you have your package?
Yes, I do.
It was mailed to my house.
Was it really?
Yeah, address is correct and everything.
Oh.
Um, okay.
Yeah, I got it, I think Saturday.
Oh, wow.
So I had no time to really look through it, because.
It's because it got delivered.
It was, yeah. Okay.
Well, I was gone for the weekend, so I came home, and I think, yeah, it was there Saturday.
Okay. Any discussion on, on those minutes from the 29th? Okay.
Yeah, it has correct address.
Yeah, it did. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The motion passed.
A side note, I did think, that's a lot of information for me to look at in one day.
That's where it was.
So.
Well, and you don't live that far from me, but a little bit. Weird. Okay. And then finally, we have the minutes from the February 5th, 2024 meeting, it's enclosure 9.1C. The recommended motion is to approve the minutes from the, oh, no, special budget workshop, got it. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Okay, that's Drew Golfen.
I'll second it.
Amy Romancheck will do the second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the motion passed. That brings us to new business, um, in the 2024, 2020, I'm sorry, old business. 2024, 2025 budget update.
So, um.
So, as Heather alluded to, I have started the, to do the presentations. I presented to the Marlboro Board of Finance last Wednesday, and we'll be doing, I think the Hebron meeting is a combination of Board of Finance, Board of Selectmen, and I believe Andover is just Board of Finance. At this time, we don't have an updated number to give to the board. Our current number is still at 2.64%, although we have seen very minor adjustments that can be made and will be made to the budget as of this, which I'm going to ask Eva to talk a little bit about. The reason we haven't provided an updated number is because it's really nothing that's going to move the needle. Right? It's, it's not, it's, and, and those things, and Eva can maybe elaborate, or maybe I'm going to steal her thunder. Unlike a local Board of Education or a local school district who has to go through the process of having the superintendent present the budget, and then a town, and then the Board of Education usually votes rather soon after that presentation is made to adopt a budget, because then it has to go to the Board of Finance and a whole bunch of steps in between. We have a longer drawn-out process, which enables us, we see some ebb and flow and things that we know we're going to have to spend money on that we might not have known about a month ago. And then in turn, we're going to learn about things where, okay, we don't need to spend money on that next year. Right now, again, Eva can go through it, there's been nothing substantive. Where we may realize some of those things over the next few weeks. In fact, Eva and I have some meetings set up to talk about some possible things. But right now, we're at about a $10,000 difference from where we were, which, again, that's not going to move the needle. But I probably just stole half of what she was going to say, and I told her I wasn't going to try to do that, but I'll turn it over to Eva.
All right, so since our budget process starts in October and it goes through March, we have the ability to review our, what our asks have been. In many cases, corporate America runs a calendar year, so January to December, and they propose increases in January. So we find out about potential price increases that we didn't know about when the budget was put together. So slowly, those trickle to me, and people inform me of those. So those are potentials for why the budget might be going up. There's also the potential that budgets might be going down, or the reduction in prices might be going down. We might, after some thought, have decided that we really don't want that to go that route. We've had more time to think about it. We, we want to take it out. Something else might be tweaked, or as in our bus contract, we find this, so they'll buy the contract so we know what the final number is. So as currently, right, and then in this process, I'm also going to be looking through revenue because now we are in March, and so we have more data, and so we can see how the numbers are running for this year, so we can make better estimates for next year. So as of right now, as of today, we have a net reduction of $10,262 that will be going to gross operating. We're going to see an increase in the capital improvement plan for $1,358. One of the items that we're purchasing unfortunately is, is being proposed to have an increase. We also just received our wellness report from Anthem. So what that means, the wellness, where our employees are entitled to wellness credits, that gives them a 1% reduction in their premium for their healthcare costs if they follow the milestones for health, necessary health, like your physical, your annual physical. So in theory, that helps reduce the overall claims. So then the board has to make up the 1% that we're crediting the employees. Unfortunately, our insurance consortium meeting is not until March 14th. So we won't know the finalized insurance number until March 14th. And our board meeting is on March 18th, so you guys are going to be getting the information unfortunate rate. Almost as it happens. So that's when we're going to present the, any adjustments to everyone at that time.
The, the other thing that I'll mention is, you know, we've talked about this in the past, is, is the VOAG and agro-science tuition issue. I, we budgeted for 100%. I think it was very prudent and wise for us to budget at 100% based off of what I'm hearing. I, I, I think that was the wisest thing to do. I do know of some other school districts that budgeted the 58%, and that might come back to bite them. So that could be another thing that potentially could, could have a, an impact that, for lack of a better term, could move that needle, right? Because that, there's a big difference between what we budgeted at 100% and being able to reduce it by 42% would be a significant thing. So we're going to continue to keep an eye on things. I will continue to keep the board appraised in my weekly communication. We, we have a finance subcommittee meeting scheduled. I think it would be prudent for us to, to move that finance subcommittee so that we can, to the, to the night of our, to the night of our insurance consortium meeting, so that we can have a most up, to have it the week before, it doesn't do a whole lot, right? So, so that's just going to be something that I put out and propose to people so that we can have the updated information for, for everybody. You know, the, the good thing is, is again, right now, we're in a net, our, our net change is $10,000 to the good, and I'm hoping that any other changes continue to move us in a, in a better direction to come in at a, at a lower percentage increase. So we can certainly try to take, entertain any questions that you all might have, but it's kind of where we are right now with the budget.
So when we're communicating the budget to the towns, are we mentioning the offset?
We are. Yeah, it's a great question. So what, and, and we're, we're getting ahead into the agenda, but it's, but it's the conversation. So what I'm presenting to, what I presented to Marlboro last week is that we had an anticipated revenue of approximately $1.4 million, which we're going to be discussing that later on this evening. The auditor, that's, that's what the auditors report is. I've reported to, I reported to Marlboro that we have, that I anticipated that the board would make the decision and ultimately vote this evening, which, again, is a few agenda items from now, to accept the audit and then ultimately make the choice to, to, to keep that maximum allowable amount of the gross budget from last year, which is 2%, and it's approximately $609,720. Not even approximate. Thank you, Drew. So, so the terms that I've been using with the town have been, this is what I anticipate happening, because it's not really my place to say this is what we're going to definitively do. But based off of the finance subcommittee, where we received some pretty clear guidance and my anticipated support of the board, we have needs in the district, and that, that capital non-recurring fund is significantly helping us address those, those needs. And then what I've been saying to them is when we, when, i- i- if the board ultimately chooses to keep that 2%, then the anticipated surplus beyond that of $840,000 is going to be money that gets divided up and given back to the towns as a credit offset. And I've been able to provide them with, the, I've been able, I was able to provide Marlboro with the dollar amount they should anticipate, and I've actually provided it. I'm giving it to the Boards of Finance when we meet. I've already given that information to the town managers, because I want them to know well in advance. They've appreciated having that information as early as possible. So, so yeah, that information has been given to me. And, and, you know, again, until we have a definitive change, I'm just sticking with the 2.64%.
But it turns out, it's almost a complete offset to that.
It, it's a pretty significant, so it was, it was interesting. The, the, one of the towns, Marlboro, when I met with him last week, said, well, what's the percentage? And I said, well, I, I don't have that, I know that you developed a spreadsheet to do that, but I, what I've said is it's a 2.64% increase. Like, I, I don't want to say, well, for you, it's this, and for you, it's this. And like, I think that could cause some confusion. Okay. But what I'm saying to people is, you could take that dollar amount that you're going to get for a credit offset, apply it to what your increase in your member town levy is, and then you can come up with what that percentage is. Or you could just call Drew, and he has a formula that can calculate it. But, but I will tell you that my interpretation or impression, and, and Andy was with me at the Marlboro meeting, and I know that.
I had the time wrong. I showed up after.
We were walking out, Drew was walking in, we said, hey, Drew. The, I, I, my impression of it was, the town was in no way, shape, or form surprised that we had an interest in keeping the 2%. I think they, I, I, my understanding is that has been a little bit of a question mark, is do you really need to keep it in the past? But it, it was something that we, I, I said, hey, this is what I'm anticipating. They didn't bat an eyelash. They, they understand that that money is helping us address issues and actually suppressing our capital budget pretty significantly, so they understand that. And, and, and they were receptive and very appreciative of the idea of, of getting the credit offset that they were going to get. Because to your point, you know, when you have a, a 410, I'm making, I'm kind of making up numbers, but when you have a $450,000 levy increase, but you're getting back a, a credit offset of $300,000, it's a very, very small increase to the, to the member town levy, and they were very much appreciative of that. So it's been positively received so far from the people that I've heard from.
Thanks. If we online, have any questions? Good. Okay, so that brings us to discussion of possible action regarding the 2024, 2027 Regional School District 8 Strategic Plan, which is enclosure 10.
So the, the plan is enclosure 10.2. I did put a hard copy of a presentation that I, I put together. Eric's just going to pull it up super quick, just to kind of guide the conversation around this.
This is the first time this has been publicly unveiled?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Make sure I didn't miss that.
Nope, we did not. So I am pleased to present an overview of the 2427 Regional School District 8 Strategic Plan. The plan is a culmination of months of work and included opportunities for involvement and input from all stakeholders in the community. The Strategic Planning Committee included teachers, parents, students, administrators, board members, one current board member and one previous board member, and other elected officials from the towns of that region 8 serves. Having a diverse committee helped ensure a variety of perspectives were included in the development of the plan. And I would like to thank each member of the Strategic Planning Committee, as well as all of the stakeholders that were involved in the data gathering process through surveys, focus groups, et cetera. I just want to thank them for giving their time to do this important work. The planning process facilitated by staff from EastCon began in the spring of 2023. Qualitative data was collected from staff, parents, and students through surveys and focus groups. Quantitative data, data sources included, but were not limited to student enrollment, achievement, and budget information, just to name a few. The Strategic Planning Committee met on four occasions last fall. With each meeting lasting several hours, the group reflected on current and future changes in education and identified the district's strengths and needs to meet these changes. Committee members discussed the district's mission and vision, and ultimately decided to revise our mission statement. The committee also considered the skills and dispositions, which Eva talked a little bit, Ava talked a little bit early about, of a Ram graduate. The creation of the skills and dispositions commenced in the 1819 school year. Their development was an iterative process that involved teachers and administrators collaboratively working to compile, categorize, refine, and ultimately identify a final list of the skills and dispositions. And they have, those, that, that information has had been, has been previously presented to this Board of Education. The strategic planning process was designed to identify and ensure Ram learners develop these skills, which are critical thinking, communication, motivation, collaboration, and integrity, and content knowledge needed for success. Using that information, four areas of focus were identified as, as meeting goals: instruction, talent management, culture and climate, and organizational systems. And we'll get into those more later. Goals were written for each of these areas by the Strategic Planning Committee, and theories of action were also drafted. Theories of action are if-then statements that provide a rationale for each of the identified goals. Next, schooling district administrators work collaboratively with department coordinators to finalize the theories of action and develop initial action plans. These action plans describe steps that the district will take towards achieving the identified goals. The action plans will be monitored to review progress, and measures of success will be documented in the plan. The strategic plan is a dynamic document, and as such, will be continuously evaluated and updated to advance the district's vision and mission in order to address the needs of students. If we go to the next slide and look at it, the, this slide does contain the revised mission statement as well as the vision statement. The vision statement was not revised from the previous strategic plan. The next slide. So the, th- this slide contains a, a, a higher level of detail about the skills and dispositions that Ava talked about earlier, and we were mentioning before, which is critical thinking, communication, motivation, collaboration, and integrity. I, I really think it's, it's timely that, that Ava talked about what she talked about today, where, you know, they're doing their portfolio presentations. It, it just shows that it's a part of what our teachers and staff focus on on a regular basis, really trying to work towards including work and assignments and projects and curriculum instructional strategies that focus on those, those skills and dispositions. If we want to move on to the next slide, oh, great, thanks, Eric. So the, this next slide provides the goals and theories of action related to instruction. I'm not a person that likes to read slides that are available, and people can read themselves, so I'll just let people read them on their own. And then the next one provides the goal and theories of action related to talent management, which was the second area identified by the Strategic Planning Committee. The next slide does provide goal, the goal and theories of action related to climate and culture. And the final slide related to the goals shows the goal and theories of action related to organizational systems. As I said, the action plans that are associated with each one of these goals have been developed. I didn't include them on the PowerPoint slide, but they are in your board packet in the strategic plan. I, I anticipate that those, the identified action plans are a starting point. This is what we're saying, this is what we know as of right now. Those might be adjusted as we move forward. That, that speaks to the dynamic aspect of this plan. It's not something that you create, you set on a shelf, and you say, all right, we're not going to really pay attention to it. It's going to be something that we're going to be constantly reviewing, looking at it, and updating those action plans. And, and as I said, we're going to be tracking their progress and documenting the steps that are taken to, to meet the, the identified goals. I, I just, again, would like to thank members of the Strategic Planning Committee and the entire Ram community for the part that they played in the development of the plan. It was a lot of work. I do recommend that the board adopt this plan, and I look forward to working collaboratively with all stakeholders towards achieving these goals over the next three years. I can certainly take any questions if anybody has.
Do we do that now, or do we do it afterwards? The motion?
I, I would, I would say let's take questions.
Now?
Yeah, first question, sir.
Here you go. I think people are going to know, Scott Soyet, Andover. I appreciate the hard work, and just, I think overall it's a great document, but it is subject to academies speaking. I'm in a corporate world where the corporate culture is full of terms that are obscure, not communicative. I think next time would be really great to have an English teacher help write the final report. Do just things like I am. If we utilize an intentional instructional framework, then cohesive practices and structures will exist to support student learning. Okay, and what does that mean? It takes a lot of reading to get that. And I, I still don't really know what's meant by intentional instructional framework. You know, as opposed to an accidental one? Really, I, I, it does, I mean, I read John Sorel in college, but that was a long time ago. Intentionality, what, what's meant by it here doesn't, isn't clear. I'm, I'm not really asking for answers to that right now. I'm happy enough with the document except for that. You know, we talked, the only place that I had a real question was, we talked about personalized recruitment strategies. And does that just mean that, you know, as, as we go to recruit this candidate, we do things divergently between candidates based on who they are, what they are? Or does it mean that, you know, we, people we know, or personal things where, you know, we, you know, in a previous district, you worked with somebody who you think would be great, and you're personally going to have recruiting them?
Sure, no, it, it's both, if you're asking for an answer, if you're like, it's both of those things, right? It, it's anything and everything that we can to make a connection with individual candidates to have them be interested in coming to this district. There is a significant teacher shortage, and we are competing with quite, quite simply districts that are, have greater financial resources and, and, and have higher rates of pay. And so personalized recruiting, I, I can give you a concrete example of that. We, we sent Dr. Shirusi, our middle school principal, and two teachers went last year. One of them a math teacher. We had a math opening, we went to the UConn job fair. So we were very specific. specific in our efforts to recruit a high-quality math teacher by sending a, another Ram math, instead of sending a superintendent or a principal, send a math teacher, right? It, that's who we want to recruit. And it worked. We recruited a highly talented math teacher. So, so it's, it's doing things like that. So it's a personalized approach depending on the vacancy. And what we do know is that the, this, this field is about making personalized connections. Because when you look at opportunities, they exist everywhere. And, and, and I know that there are some teachers on the board, as you know, and, and opportunities exist everywhere. So the big, it's really important to, to make that personal connection with, with school districts. And then it also means targeted recruiting. Targeted recruiting, such as if we have a vacancy for a social studies teacher, I'll, I have the ability to create an email. Well, I should say this. I know the, I know you can do it. I personally don't have the ability to do it because I don't know how it happens, but I know it can be done to create an email that gets sent to every person in the state of Connecticut who holds a social studies teaching certification. And they'll get an email from our district. So it's, it's, it's a multitude of things. And just, just, there were two English teachers that were, there was one English teacher on the Strategic Planning Committee. And there were, so there was one on the, on the entire committee involved in the process from, from start to finish. And then, as I said, we had the, the, the drafted action plans were reviewed by a committee of teachers as well. And, and listen, I understand it. I, I, I use educational jargon, and, and when I realize I am doing that, I kind of smack myself in the face and try not to. It's an unfortunate aspect of, of, of the work that we do is that it gets kind of put in there. But I do understand what you're saying, and I appreciate the input.
Yeah, I mean, some of it's beautifully written. I mean, Ram will create an equitable environment. We're all members of our school community are welcome, safe, challenged, and engaged socially, emotionally, intellectually. That's, that's great. That's readable. Everyone understands that. But some of it really is hard to read. That's, that's, that's all I want to, you know, we're, we're not going to do this again next year. It's, you know, this is, this will last for some years, I assume.
Yes.
But next time, perhaps, we could think about that a little as we come up with the final.
Well, to the extent that, that some of these documents are public and that people are going to read them who aren't as well-versed in educational speak, if you will, it's helpful. I mean, it is a somewhat dense document, and every corporate one that was like it was just as bad than I ever saw. So, I mean, it's the nature of the institutions we belong to that sort of creates things that are harder for some of us to read than, than others. But I mean, it is, it is, I like, oh, you're, of course, there's a few lines in here that were a little hard to get through. But, you know, that is the nature of these documents, at least from my experience. But the, the question I had was on the action steps. There's, there's no even high level of when are we going to address them? So for example, in talent management, provide the necessary resources to support staff needs. How often are we going to look at that? I mean, are we going to poll the teaching staff every three months, every six months, every academic year? Right? So there is no sort of timing on how we get this stuff. So how's that supposed to work?
Yeah. So, so it's interesting. When, when we first started going through the process of developing the action steps, an attempt was made to try to say, this is going to happen in year one, this is going to happen in year two, and this is going to happen in year three. What ended up happening by having that be the expectation that was levied upon department coordinators, teachers, administrators, they really struggled because there are some things that are going to be ongoing. What you just described is an ongoing thing. And I'm going to be perfectly honest with each and every one of you on this board. When I come to you in future years and say, hey, this is the budget I'm presenting to you, and, and I, and, and I, I'm going to point to that line right there that says, no, no, we said that we're going to provide the necessary resources and support for our teachers and staff so that they can be successful. And this is what we need to be successful. It, it's, it's because that's something that it's, it's, there's a lot of the work that's in here that is going to definitely be work done by administration and teaching staff. And I, I understand that. But there's, it's going to be getting the support of the board, getting the support of the community. Because there were also, as I said, there were boards of select, or I'm sorry, there were members of boards of selectmen from two of the three towns. One of the towns unfortunately chose not to have a representative participate, but what, Eric was the board member from Andover who said, well, I can represent Andover. But unfortunately, Andover didn't choose to send a, a board of selectmen to rep, be representative on this. But it's, it's really, so, so going back to what I was saying, with the struggles with, you know, trying to say year one, year two, year three, we, we ultimately made the decision of, of, hey, listen, let's not pin it down to it's going to happen in year one. Because there was a lot of uncertainty. Well, I'm not sure if this is going to be year one or year two. I'm not going to be sure if, if I don't get to this in year one, or if I don't make the progress, then I might. And so that people really struggled with that. And once we kind of lifted the idea of, hey, listen, it doesn't have to be identifying this is happening in year one, this is happening in year two, this is happening in year three, I, I will tell you, I think people felt liberated with coming up with, okay, these are the things we need to do. I think that some of these things are going to be naturally prioritized. I think that some, and that's why I also talked about documenting measures of success, like this, particularly those pages of, of where it has action plans. There's going to be modifications to those, and there's also going to be additional headings down there that say, measures of success. This was completed here. This has been something that we've done, and it will be ongoing. So, so those types of things are going to, are going to happen as we go through the next three years. Hopefully that helps.
So, yeah, no, that's fine. It makes sense. My, I guess my follow-up would be, as opposed to just having us learn about material needs at budget time, should we think about having our agenda have you talk to us on some interval about the status of the strategic plan?
Yep.
Right? And so you could come to us and say, you know, whatever we decide is at board, if everybody's interested, that we have you tell us where you are on some of these things, right?
Certainly something we could do.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Because it's nice to, because this is all, I mean, this is ambitious, right? And it's, it's got a ton of value for our organization, but we need to sort of understand how it's going.
Absolutely. Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah. I have to say that this was, this was a huge undertaking, and it's really very impressive. I absolutely love the skills and disposition. I, I love it. I, I love the, even though we put for Ava on the spot, I love, I love the fact that, that the students are beginning to think in these terms, and we know that we're bringing it down to the, you know, middle school and the elementary schools. These are great. And, and I, I absolutely love the goals that we set. I think they're really, they're really some important things to be looking at. You know, Colin mentioned teacher shortage, and we know we have power shortages, probably more so than teachers. If you guys are seeing that or not.
Yes, we are.
Yeah. So there's all kinds of, of ways to be recruiting and bringing in that kind of talent. What I guess the, the only question I have, and honestly, you may not be able to answer, is so what are our thoughts on measuring these? Because that's clearly not easy to do. You know, I'm not sure how we measure, certainly how we measure the skills that we are teaching, you know, the students and that we want them. I love the fact that this is part of their senior portfolio. I think it's probably going to be more beneficial to them than any portfolios that have been presented, probably. These are real, all real life skills for them. Any, any thoughts that the committee come up at all with how some of these things would be measured? And I don't, and I, I don't know that, that they can be really specific.
Yeah. It was definitely something that was discussed, and I think it's going to vary on the goal that was identified, right? So if you have a goal that says, I, I'll use the one that, and I'll actually answer Scott's question by answering your question. So an instructional framework is, an intentional instructional framework are, is incorporating certain instructional skills within the context of your classroom. But instead of it being Colin's classroom, or Heather's classroom, or Scott's classroom, and everybody's kind of doing their own thing. Hey, this is kind of how I, this is how I approach teaching. The idea of having an instructional framework that's utilized by a school or by a district means there's common through lines that are being utilized, no matter whose classroom it, you know, you're doing hands-on learning, you're doing personalized learning, you're doing inquiry-based learning, right? So, so there's, it's, it's having, the intentional part is, I have these structures and systems that I'm putting into place, and I'm utilizing those with my kids. But I know that the person next to me is using similar ones. I know that the person on either, you know, so that's, that's the idea of an instructional framework. Instead of it being practices that are just kind of varied from classroom to classroom, you're going to have individuality of instructional practices in some way, shape, or form. But you do want to see a level of consistency. And, and something that came out through this planning process was that consistency doesn't exist. It, it, it does probably more so within departments. So I don't want to say it doesn't exist, but I'd say within departments it exists. But what we're looking to do is try to establish a, a greater level of consistency across schools, across the entire school, and then across the entire district. And so to answer your question, how would we measure that? It would be, well, eventually I'm going to be able to come back to the board and say, here's what our instructional framework is. You know, here, here's the, here are those things that we've identified as a collective group that are important, and we're going to try to make sure that these practices are being, these instructional practices are being utilized within the context of classrooms on a consistent basis across the district. So.
Because so some of these really could be very easy to, you know, just, you know, maybe reporting back to the board, you know, programs that members are engaging, that, you know, staff is engaging with, you know, in the community. You know, some of these are really easy.
Yep, absolutely.
And I know some are a little bit more obscure, but I guess, but, and I, I really, you know, I really, I admire this document, and I really, it's, it's excellent, honestly. I guess just, in, just in to keep it going, is, you know, you know, how do we, you know, how do we report on this? How do we make it known that, that we are looking at these things and we are continuing to work on them? Like you said, this is too, this is too important to get put on a shelf. And unfortunately, in education, sometimes those things happen. You know, but I really think this is a really important plan, and for the students as well as, as the, you know, the Ram community.
Absolutely.
Maybe like you had said, just coming back and reporting on it. It's simple things, you know, what, what development, you know, professional development to teaching, what community activities were brought in and so forth.
Yep.
I was just wondering too, under like the talent management, did the teachers fill out like a climate survey?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Because that information could be used to help to see what they need.
Yeah, we do that. We're, we're getting ready to administer that this spring. And then, Michael, am I correct? It's every two years? Yeah. So.
I don't mind, it might be over second just a little bit, but I think this is like a very, very impressive plan. I don't, I don't understand all the logistics of it. But the only thing that I can speak of as like a, a Ram student is that like, say, looking at critical thinking. A Ram graduate possesses the ability to think critically in order to approach a variety of problems through inquiry, non-systematic order thinking. I think a lot of these students, and I even include myself, you know, especially freshmen, sophomores, underclassmen, we know that we should care about all these things. But I don't think we really do understand that, why these, like, skills and dispositions are super important matters to grow as people. And I think if, I don't know, maybe if you focus just maybe a little bit too much on word message, not enough on the students and what their thoughts are and what they think of, and why they should even be considering this back in their mind, all four years, might be just something to consider and to talk about throughout your, your Ram career.
Absolutely. You know, it's, it's one of those things that even, they started the process where, where really at the beginning stages, even though the, the skills and dispositions were developed several years ago, they've been slowly been trying to get placed kind of into the vernacular of what's discussed in classrooms over the course of the past few years. But to your point, Oliver, I completely agree with you, is that something that teachers need to have on the forefront when they're doing things like developing curriculum, right? When, when we develop curriculum to say, all right, this particular curriculum really lends itself to these particular skills and dispositions, right? And, and making sure that, you know, teachers are really reinforcing that with students, so that they have an understanding about why, why we're doing things in this particular way. One, one of the things that was interesting, and, and as I said, we had three students that were involved in this committee, and I'm sure you remember, and they were fantastic, very outspoken, in a very good way. And one of the students, at some point, I'm paraphrasing, you know, said, you know, when I come into class and I don't see the connection of why I have to learn what it is that I'm learning, he's like, I basically tune out completely. Like, you know, and it was, if, you know, it's, it's kind of like what, kind of what you're saying, which is, you know, why, I need to know why this stuff is important to me in order to, you know, tune in, pay attention, and, and really, you know, be actively involved in the learning. And that's something that we can always strive to do better. And I would, I would say for our elementary teachers, that's something that, you know, we do from a K to sixth spectrum, is helping students understand the importance of what it is that's being covered as far as content and materials in, in this, you know, in the classroom setting.
And I think, I mean, I just think, I think, like you said, the more that, more everyone is using this terminology over and over again, and just showing basic examples throughout their day, I think it becomes something that becomes ingrained and so forth. So, you know, hopefully that does continue. And, and just looking at the students quickly, I'm assuming Oliver here did not come in and say, if I don't know, this is her father or principal. Listen, if I don't know what I'm supposed to be doing here.
Oliver, thanks for contributing.
To add on to Oliver's point, I feel like, yeah, it would be super great to like, know the like, specific definitions of each of these characteristics. And also maybe, I know that when I was completing my, my particular senior portfolio, I definitely had to go into the like Afro rubric and read through what each skill or disposition really meant. Because like, I know, you know, in broader terms, like critical thinking and integrity, like what goes to me. But when I actually read the rubric, I was like, able to connect way more things to those, each, each of those characteristics. Like, for example, I didn't know that integrity could include like, in, in that honesty, I didn't know that integrity can include like, having like, like clear conversations, like for example tutoring, like being clear with one another. So I feel like maybe if students were introduced to those specific characteristics earlier, they could like maybe assign like different things that they do in high school to those specific characters. Be like, oh, like this essay really demonstrates my critical thinking. Or wow, like this really shows, like my completion of this course really shows my motivation. And I think that maybe could be helpful even in senior year, being like, wow, look at all this that I did. Like, I completed each one of those characteristics, and I feel really accomplished, and I feel like I'm able to move on past high school and feel like I am able to pursue my future confidently because of that. Although I will say, when I did go through and I put those assignments with those characteristics, I was like, wow, like I didn't realize how much I was doing in high school. You know? I was like, that, that really shows that high school actually maybe did teach me something. So, yeah.
Self-evaluation process. I mean, we do it, we update our resumes, you know, it's very fulfilling. Is there anybody online that has any comments? Okay. Okay. So then, do we have a motion to adopt the 2024 to 2027 Regional School District Eight Strategic Plan as presented?
I'll make the motion.
Okay. That's Joe Coletti made the motion, Don.
Segmented by Scott Saya from Andover.
Any further discussion on this? Good. All in favor? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Passes.
Thank you.
Okay, next up, second read of policies. We have policy 4125, athletic coaches' evaluations and termination. It's enclosure 10.3A in your packet.
I move to a per.
Okay, that's Scott Soyatt, Don, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, that's Drew Golfen. Any discussion? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. That passes. Policy 4160, 4260, non-discrimination personnel, it's enclosure 10.3B in your packet. Do we have a motion to adopt policy 4160, 4260, non-discrimination personnel as presented?
I'll make the motion.
It's Joe Coletti. A second?
I'll second. Scott Soyatt, Andover.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. That passes. Next up, do we have a motion to adopt policy 4161, 4261, prohibition of sex discrimination and sexual harassment in the workplace as presented?
So I'll move Drew Golfen.
Drew Golfen, second?
Scott Soyatt.
Amy.
Amy Romanchev. Okay. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion passes. All right. Do we have a motion to adopt policy 5143, drug and alcohol use by students as presented?
I'll make the motion. Scott Soyatt.
Second. Gabe Marks.
Any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion passes. Oops. That will bring us to a recommended motion to adopt policy 5310, immunizations as presented. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
That's Pam Farrington. A second?
Second, Joe Coletti.
Any discussion?
Yeah, that's what I do. First of all, the very last word on page one is just about out of place, it's just, it's linking sections one and two, so it's just an or, just, that doesn't belong with section five, five with one B, it's just a silly typo.
Could I, could I speak to that? I, I'm not 100% sure, because I did see that when you sent me the email. It says, or a school nurse, or, so it's, it's B, and then it goes into, oh, no, actually, I apologize, this is true. So, you're right, I, we can, we can, that can be something that we delete without any problem.
We're just sliding over, I mean, they're saying ors between one and two, and three and four and five, but that, that or just belongs, shift to left, so you can see what it belongs to. That's, that's a trivial thing.
Yeah.
But I have two more serious things in here. First of all, we have a four and five on page two, say, in the case of, in the field, is some influenza, influenza, boy, I can't speak, has passed a child's fifth birthday, or in the case of Petusis, they pass a child's sixth birthday. That's some legal language from something that's unrelated to us. We don't need those in our policy, unless we're going to start bringing in, you know, five, five and six-year-old middle schoolers. You know, who knows? I mean, a really advanced kid, you never know, but, so I, I just feel like that's, that language doesn't belong there.
Yeah, what I could say to that is, I understand your perspective, I, it would be something that I would just feel more comfortable going to our school, our attorney, who I collaborate with, with regards to our policy, and said, would this be an issue with us being a secondary school district? Without having their input, I just would, would hate to do it. So if, if there's an appetite for the board to say, if our attorney that says that it's okay to delete it, I could certainly make that delete. I don't know how we can do that from a motion perspective.
I don't think you'd want to spend the money talking to them about such.
Right, it, it, it's not harmful to be in there.
It's all right.
Yeah, it's not harmful.
No reason to get the billable hours over.
I'm 100% with you.
Well, no, but then you have to take, pay for those hours.
That's what I need, we have to pay for those hours.
Yeah, not worth it. And I, I didn't really understand the, the next bit on the.
I could speak to that. Okay. Yeah, so, so there was a, there was a period of time, I don't know how long that period of time was, maybe a two-year window of time where religious exemptions were allowed for, for certain immunizations. Immunizations were, were required from, at least going back as far as I can remember, from the time I came to Connecticut to work in 2005. And then there was a period of time, and I, it was probably a two- to three-year window, where legislative changes were put into place, and religious exemptions were permissible for some, for, for, for students. Legislative changes were made again, and the ability for religious exemptions for immunizations then went away. So what this is, and you noted this, is this is grandfathering certain people. So it, it, I will say, it's really important that we obviously maintain this. I've run into situations where I've had to, I've had people come and say, well, I don't have my immunizations, but I have a religious exemption. There's a very specific process that we have to follow as a school district to ensure that the religious exemptions were actually given, because I've had, to be honest with you, I've had people misrepresent the truth and say, oh, no, I had a religious exemption, and when we ask them for the documentation, they can't provide it to us. So, so it's a grandfathering for certain students.
So I didn't get that in the reading of this somewhat tense document, that, that the April 28 date, which you were referring to, the grandfathering is 2021, it's not really clear, or at least it didn't come off to me, this policy, if I was reading, if I was a parent reading it, you know, on the website or something, that they no longer can get a religious exemption. I didn't pick that up anywhere, and in particular, it seems like it appears twice, because it comes up in one B, and then it comes up again in two C.
It's all throughout, too.
Yeah, so it's a little bit strange that it's mentioned twice, and, and so this, this is a, this is kind of a weird.
I imagine a conflict from the legislation.
Because a child can't enroll in school any longer without immunizations.
Yeah, well, that makes sense to me, but I mean, yeah, it's just not clear in this document.
Yeah, I mean, this is, this is really just.
Oh.
Yeah, I mean, it's just talking about that very, very, I, I think it was a true here.
Yeah, but that's kind of what I guessed from this, but it was not at all clear in our policy, and that bothered me.
Yeah, yeah, I didn't get it either.
I wasn't there for the, the first reading of this, I wasn't on the policy committee when this came up.
Right.
I'm planning abstaining because I just, I haven't had the time to do that, for the research, but I am bothered by the language. When I can't, when I can't understand a policy, if I read it, I'm, I'm hesitant to accept it, no matter how good the lawyers are.
Yeah, I mean, I didn't quite understand the April 28, 2021, or, it wasn't, it's not very clear, it's not a, it's not a great policy.
Well, Colin answered it, but yeah, that was, that is difficult to follow through in the policy.
Any other discussion on that? So I believe it's, it's abstaining.
If we know we're going to get an abstention, I would do a roll call.
We have to do a roll call, which is fine. So we'll just go through, and you'll just vote on it. Michael Bollier?
Yay.
Mike Sharon's not here. Joe Coletti?
Yes.
Kirsten Erlinson?
Yes.
I don't think Carrie Ferlino made it on. Drew Golfen?
Abstain.
You're going to abstain, okay. Gabe Marks?
Yes.
Amy Romanchev?
Yes.
Scott Soyatt?
Abstain.
Okay, and Heather Summer is yes.
Heather, Kirsten Erlinson is yes.
Oh.
Can't hear you very well, Kristen.
I didn't hear what she said. Can you vote again, Kirsten?
Pretty sure she said yes.
Yes? Yes, okay, great, thank you. Broke up.
Mission's here on us.
Okay. Okay, so the, that motion passes. All right. In the line of policies we're looking at tonight, that brings us.
Health assessments.
To health assessments and screenings. Do we have a motion to adopt policy 51, I'm sorry, 5315, health assessments and screenings as presented?
I'll make a motion.
Pam Farrington made the motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Mike Bollier made the second. Any discussion on that?
So, so again, I, I wasn't around for these either, so, in this non-emergency invasive physical exam.
What page, Elaine?
I'm on, well, there's no.
Or sex section.
Section seven. So from time to time, the school district might want to do something like this, but parents can help their kids out, and of course, if you're 18 or older, you can help yourself out. So I'm not sure what's the point of this, what is this section for? Just curious. What, what would we do, you know, and, and you have to tell the parent ahead of time you're going to do it anyway, and, so what is this for?
Well, I can tell you that we don't, this is coming directly from the legislation because it's permissible to do it, which is why it's in the policy. I can tell you that we, as a practice, don't, not, not receive invasive, in, non-invasive exams, or invasive physical exams. There are times where we will have, we will coordinate with a medical provider to get health screenings or health assessments done for students, but it's not something that we, we're not having our nurses do. You know, it, it, this talks about any act during such examination that includes incision, insertion, or injection into the body, we're not doing that.
Yeah, I, that's why, I just, I was wondering what this, what this was for, but.
Because it's part of.
Part of the law. Okay.
And there are schools that.
There's, there certainly could be, yeah, there, there certainly could be.
For many, to, for whatever reason.
Correct.
You know, some of this, I'm just reading it briefly, I, I'm, I'm thinking that if that does happen, and I don't know, because it doesn't really, it's not very clear here, but this would be an emergency situation, and probably emergency personnel would probably be brought in, is my thoughts. I don't know that for sure, but there are, there are plenty of schools in Connecticut that might fall into an area where something like this has to be done, so I'm glad it's not us, but.
And the schools.
Oh, mhm, yeah.
Yeah, I'm glad it's not us, but.
Yeah.
It could.
Any other discussion from folks online? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Opposed?
I abstain.
Okay, hold on.
Do we have to do a roll call?
As part of the board conduct update?
Okay.
That, we're getting to that, we're just getting ahead of it.
Yeah.
All right, so we'll do a roll call for that. Mike Bollier?
Aye.
Mike Sharon's not here. Joe Coletti?
Yes.
Kirsten Erlinson?
Yes.
Pam Farrington?
Yes.
Carrie Ferlino's not on. Drew Golfen?
Yes.
Gabe Marks?
Yes.
Amy Romanchev?
Yes.
Scott Soyatt?
Abstain.
And Heather Summer is yes. Okay.
This is not one before we go, because I know Scott had a question about it.
All right, so, so the, the last one, we're looking to revise, and it's part of the three from, from September that I know Drew and Scott were not a part of the subcommittee before. I will tell you that this is a policy that is really directed towards elementary-grade students, right? Because it's about not being able to take away physical activity for student discipline. Where is that typically going to happen? Or, well, it doesn't happen anymore because of this policy or this law. Our elementary teachers might have an opinion on this, but, but basically, it's, it's really intended for, at the elementary level, they have recess, you know, before, after lunch, they have recess opportunities. And essentially, what this, this legislation was created to do was to prevent teachers or school staff from saying, you didn't do your homework, so you can't go out to recess, or you've been misbehaving in class, and you can't go out to recess. If you were, if we were in a situ, and, and so that law does apply to us, and, and so if we have a student who is misbehaving, not doing their homework, we don't have as much, we don't have recess at the elementary or at the middle school, we certainly don't have at the high school, we do have, we do have physical education classes, and we wouldn't be able to say, hey, you're misbehaving, so you can't participate in phys ed classes, as a result, go sit on the bench the entire time. Now, that doesn't mean if a student is being unsafe in physical education class, that they couldn't say, we're going to refer you to the office, as we would in any class, we're going to send you to the office, have the administration deal with the misbehavior. But that's essentially what the, what this is for. But because of the fact that there are opportunities for physical activity within the context of the school day, it was important for us to update this policy to make sure that it was in compliance with legislative changes that had been taken, that had taken place, so.
So if we were to vote this, say, down, say, that's nonsense, because I grew up in a, in a, getting recess taken, I could say, a child.
And it was a motivating factor.
So I'm just asking, like, quickly, if we were to say, no, we're not doing that.
Because legislatively.
Legislative, it's still.
Outdated or.
Yeah, okay.
Not up-to-date policy is, is, does not get, it's legislation.
It overrides it, that's what I assume.
And, and, and the other thing really is.
Shame on the legislature.
Really is the other thing.
Wasting their time on such nonsense.
Right. It is that if we don't adopt this, and staff does not know, does not understand the ramifications, again, not here in the high school, but, so if, if a school did not adopt this, and then their staff did not understand that they cannot, and I, I was actually surprised that it wasn't more specific than this, because it's an actual specific amount of time, and that if you do do that, you, you really could lose your job.
Imagine a kid saying that to a teacher.
Yeah.
I legally have to go to recess.
Well, or an administrator, you know, staff, well, staff needs to understand, you know, you never know, not everybody wants wonderful administrators like this.
And Mike, I don't believe that you ever got recess taken away.
No. It was, like I said, it was a very motivating factor, you know.
It is.
It was, you know.
No more.
Yes.
Okay, so do we have a motion to adopt policy 555, physical activity and student discipline as presented?
I won't make the motion, I'm going to abstain, I'm going to say nay.
I'm going to have to do a roll call.
I won't abstain, I'll say, say nay.
I'll make, I'll make the motion.
Okay, so Drew Golfen made the motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second it, but I'm going to still say nay.
Okay, Michael.
Roll call, anyway.
Oh, thank you. Okay, any other discussion on that? All right, and we'll do the roll call, Mike Bollier?
Oh, you can say aye, I don't want to draw a problem.
All in favor?
Aye.
You're abstaining still.
I said a roll call.
Mike Bollier?
Nay.
Joe Coletti?
Yes.
Kirsten Erlinson?
Symbolic.
Yes.
Pam Farrington?
Yes.
Drew Golfen?
Yes.
Gabe Marks?
Uh, yes.
Amy Romanchev?
Yes.
Scott Soyatt?
Abstain.
Heather Summer, yes.
Just to be fixed, please, I, I'm the policy committee, I feel like I have to really read these carefully if I'm going to vote on something, and just haven't had the time. I, I usually look at the legislation, and I, I actually read the policy, but I didn't get to the legislation, so, and it was close to midnight last night when I'm finishing And it was close to midnight last night when I'm finishing up everything.
I think you emailed me around 11:30.
Yeah.
Okay, that brings us to policy 5.133 for deletion, social events. It's enclosure 10.3H in your package. Do we have a motion to delete policy 5.133, social events?
I'll make the motion, Joe Coletti.
Joe Coletti, a second?
I'll second.
Mike Bullier, any discussion?
Just to clarify, this is the one about where if it's, like, if the kids just decide to throw a party in the middle of the school day, then you have, we have to clarify, or no, we're, we're not requiring that the administration has to approve that because we believe it to be common practice, right?
Correct. So it's, it's, it's understood that the principal would have to approve any type of social activity that would be taken to the school. Right? We just deleted it from the, as like, not really our policy. It's more of a, it's more of a student handbook policy based upon our first. Correct.
But I, I actually don't think that's a good enough reason to delete a policy that we have. I think this is something that actually is policy material. It's just very short, little, simple policy material. I know lawyers recommend deleting it, and I assume they have their reasons, but the fact that it's in the handbook doesn't make it, doesn't mean that the board is saying, oh, yeah, we don't, we don't care about that anymore. That's why I feel like deleting a policy says something like this. It's saying that it's, it's no longer our policy. We believe it's the administration make the decision. So I feel so this is actually something that, that we do want policy on. And I think I'm alone on that, and that's fine, but.
So I thought this, it's because this was somewhere else.
It's student handbook and it's part of the admin, like, the school policy. Correct. So taken from the board. So anytime a student activity is going to take place, let's say a school dance, a fundraiser that might involve student participating in activity, there's a system of, basically that person, whoever's organizing it, has to get permission from first the building administrator. If it's related in any way, shape, or form to an athletic event, because sometimes that happens, it has to get the approval of the athletic director. And ultimately, I receive the permission slip form and sign off it out, to sign off it out, sign off on it as well. So there is a series of permissions that anybody has to go through in order to have something.
So it's really a jurisdictional question, right? So as you point out, it's not necessarily board policy, but it's a school policy.
Yeah, it's a lowercase, it's a lowercase p.
Right, so it.
Well, right now it's uppercase.
The next question would be, do, does the board take a look at some point at the school policies to make sure that we're okay with them?
This is the school policies. That is, the administrative regulations are a little different. The superintendent and the create, you know, administrative regulations, and they create the student handbooks and other, possibly other handbooks for teachers. I don't think so, but it could be. Or for other staff, but those are not what the board is saying we have to do.
Right, so, so that's what I'm saying. It becomes, it becomes the purview of the administration.
Yes.
Right, so Mike, which is fine with me in terms of this, I mean, I don't see why an administration can't take responsibility for social events. My question is, of all the things that the administration does, are there, is there a point where the board has a role in looking at that, in case?
So, so we're going to.
In case you want to follow this policy.
So, so, so the, if there is a, well, there's not really a, there's not really a process for the board looking at the lowercase Ps to make sure that they are in compliance with the uppercase Ps, right?
Right.
The boards, if I find out, like, the process is this. The school board has policies, which we're discussing right now. My job as a superintendent is to make sure that those policies are being adhered to. If I discover that a policy is not being adhered to, then it's my responsibility to address it with the appropriate person to say, hey, there's a school board policy that says this is what you're supposed to be doing, and you're not in compliance with that school board policy, and we make sure that we address it in that manner. But the board's purview, and this kind of is getting into the realm of next week's workshop.
Next week, yeah.
Is, is you set the uppercase Ps, which is the policies of, and, and I understand your point. Your point is this should be an uppercase P. And if that's the will of the board, then that's the will of the board. What, what our recommendation, the recommendation from our attorney is there's no legislative requirements for this particular policy. And because of that, it could be in a handbook, it could be a process that's identified. And therefore, my recommendation to you is it doesn't have to be an uppercase P. It doesn't have to be a school board policy. Doesn't mean that everything that is written in here is not being done. It just, it doesn't necessarily require the board to have a policy related to it.
But you're not saying that the only uppercase P should be the legislative ones, right?
There are others that. Sometimes, nope.
Right, okay.
But that does seem to be our lawyer's idea.
Well, I do think that, I do think that some policies are just made by administration. I think that's probably what you're saying, because I'm going to speak in, you know, there's a role of the board and there's a role of school administrators and, you know, I think probably the board is trying to keep things in those lines, I would assume, because some things, some things just don't really involve the board. They're just administrative.
Yeah, but by, by my recommendation to eliminate this policy is not a recommendation that, ah, let's just let kids and people do whatever we want. No, no, I know. It's, it's, we have a provision, we have a process in place, it's being adhered to. We dot our i's and cross our t's to it. And I, I think, you know, it, it's a, to your point, it's a one-sentence policy or two-sentence policy, but it's unnecessary. We have, we have things in place to make sure that we are not just letting things run amok throughout the building in the district. And, you know, one of the things that we're trying to do with our policy handbook is make it a little bit less cumbersome, right? And, and so if, if we don't need to have certain things in the board policy handbook, or the board policies, then, then the recommendation could be just, let's just eliminate it because this is something that we can do at an elementary base level. And that's my recommendation, so.
And the lawyers don't have to look at this nonsense, but, you know, years, squinting down and say, oh, yeah, okay. Every, every time they read a page, it's.
It's a change.
Exactly.
Is that why they write such long policies themselves?
Right. They didn't make enough money on this one. They said, you can get rid of it.
Any other discussion from online? Okay. All right, all in favor?
I'm going to do a roll call.
I'm going to do a roll call. Mike Bullier?
Yay.
Mike Sharon, Joe Coletti?
Yes.
Kirsten Erlinson? Pam Farrington?
Yes.
Drew Galton?
Yes.
Gabe Marks?
Uh, no.
Amy Romancheff?
Yes.
Scott Soyet?
No.
And Heather Summer is yes. Kirsten Erlinson? Oh, she left the meeting? Okay. All right.
So.
That motion passed, right?
It did pass.
Okay.
Do you mind if I just speak to this next one? So I'll just, just remind, so school enumeration 5117. So this is something that ironically is something that is in legislation that we are required to do on an annual basis. And essentially what our attorney said is because it is in legislation, we're running this report, we're providing this information to the state on a regular basis. We know we have to do it, we do it. It doesn't need to be within the context of the policy handbook. So their recommendation and my recommendation is to eliminate it from the policies.
I'll move to accept.
So, I have a question, or do we need to do something first?
So we can take, take the motion to.
To approve.
To approve it, and that's Scott Soyet. Do we have a second?
I'll second, Joe Coletti.
Okay, and we, now we can do discussion?
So it seems like we've had the conversation about so many of these things that are in our policies are in legislation. And we have to have them in our policies. And now we have in front of us something that's in legislation, and we don't have to have it in our policy. So I'm not sure I understand.
Or we're, we're running the report because it's legislative, so by law we have to do it, so this, we don't need a policy because, right? Is that the?
Yeah, so correct, correct. I, if I'm understanding your correctly, your question is why are, in some cases are we saying we're updating it due to legislative changes? And in other cases, we're saying, hey, we can get rid of it. Because, so the answer to that question is there are certain things that can be problematic without having clear school board policy, providing direction for how our school district handles things. Student discipline, sexual harassment, discrimination. Those are things that we will deal with at the school level. I will tell you that there's not going to be any families that are coming to us and saying, hey, are you providing school enumeration to the state? I'm being somewhat flip, but that's, that's the honest truth of it. So, so it's, it's, this is, this is not juicy, this is not salacious, this is not something that. But I will tell you, and, and Dr. Shrucci does it, Dr. Bristow does it, the administration does it on a regular basis. We deal with issues with parents and we turn to school board policy and we say, this is the school board policy that dictates how we manage these things. We do it on a almost daily basis at some times, right? We do it with staff at a certain times, we do it with students at certain times, we do it with families at certain times. And so it's beneficial for us to have the most updated things based off of legislative changes for those types of things. I'll use a great example of one of them, termination of athletic coaches, right? That's one that we're going to discuss. I don't know if we've discussed that one or that's later on. Maybe that's, maybe that's a first read for us. But that's something that could come up. So we want to make sure that the language related to termination and evaluation of athletic coaches is up to date. We want to make sure that student use of, of district-wide technology is up to date because we're going to have kids who misuse district-issue technology. And so it's important for us to be able to point to the, to the board policy related to those matters to say, you violated this policy. In, in a case like this.
Yeah.
It's, I don't want to say it's insignificant, but it's insignificant.
Yeah, nobody's going to, yeah, okay.
So that's the reason why we're kind of juggling this. I'm trying to, I get it.
Any other discussion on that? Do I need to do a roll call? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And the motion passes. That will bring us to policy 1422 for deletion, student contests. It's enclosure 10.3J in your packet. We have a motion to delete policy 1422, student contests.
I'll make the motion, Joe Coletti.
Joe Coletti made the motion, a second?
Second, Gabe Marks.
Any discussion on this? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that motion passes. That brings us to new business. We're not that far out. All right, so, discussion and possible action regarding accepting the 2023, 20, I'm sorry, 2022, 2023 audit. Do we have a motion that the region eight Board of Education accept the 2022, 23 budget audit with a surplus fund balance of $1,439,932?
So move, Gabe Marks?
Second.
Second is Mike Bullier. Discussion?
Yeah, I, I don't have an 11.1.
There's not a document to go.
Oh, okay, all right, okay.
It's just, so it's based off of a presentation that the auditors did.
Right, okay.
And two very long documents.
Yeah, I got that. I was looking at those. I just, yeah, okay, I was looking like, what am I missing?
Nope.
Okay.
Any other discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that passes. Discussion and possible action regarding the allocation of 2022, 23 surplus funds to capital non-recurring projects. It's enclosure 11.2 in your packet. Do we have a motion to allocate the fiscal year 2022, 23 audited surplus amount allowable as per state statute of 2% of the total budget totaling $609,720 to the capital non-recurring unallocated for projects to be determined at a later date?
So move, Scott Soyet.
Second?
I'll second.
Mike Bullier, any discussion?
Can I just speak to something real quick? I think it's important to have. Well, I'm doing it for Mike Sharon because he's not here today.
Oh, that's right.
One of the things, Lee.
I know, I hadn't, I hadn't opened it yet.
Well, so this, this is, this is a, I appreciate the board doing this. As I mentioned earlier on, this capital non-recurring fund that we've been building over years has been helping us address issues related to the athletic fields. We're really at the precipice for starting a project to address drainage issues in our comp field, to address some just issues overall with our, our 316 north and south practice fields. And one of the things that we did from, when going through the capital planning project, the capital budget planning project process this year was we had different tiers. And tier one included all the projects that the board ultimately voted to have as a part of our capital plan. There was a project of approximately $225,000 that was, was basically our entire tier two. And that was to address access issues, handicap access issues at the middle school baseball field. And essentially, during the facility subcommittee meeting, it was discussed of, hey, listen, this, this is something that we need to do. So several years ago, we actually had an audit conducted by the State Office of Civil Rights that led to the district having to make, expend a pretty significant amount of money and make some changes in order to make sure that handicap access was, was available at places like the comp field, at the soft, at the high school softball field. It was a high school-specific audit, so it didn't address anything related to access issues with the middle school fields. However, they kind of said, well, that is going to have to be fixed because the baseball field has access issues. So it's, we have this issue that we need to address, and essentially the desire of the facility subcommittee, and we don't have to do anything about it tonight, but I just wanted to let everybody here know. The idea coming out in the suggestion of facility subcommittee was, let's take some of this 605 or 609 that we just put into capital non-recurring unallocated, and let's fix this issue while we have the money, while we have, and it falls right into what we're trying to do, which is to address our athletic field issues. So again, nothing that we need to do this evening. It's just that I know that Mike would want to talk about it, because it was, Mike Sharon would want to talk about it because it was something that was discussed at our, our facilities meeting. I could certainly try to answer any questions that people might have.
Is there a limit to the size of the capital non-recurring budget account?
So you can only take 2% in, but it is not.
So if we did that for several years in a row, we could theoretically build it up substantially for a big project, too, right?
So, okay.
Yep.
Okay, any other discussion? Online?
Chairman, I have a question, but that's not a list right now.
For the.
I know I'm on order.
Capital non-recurring?
When we get to that, I'm going to be talking about it, you know, a couple of coming up when I do the financials. I can give you what the balance is without this 609 in it.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that motion passes. That brings us to setting the Ram High School 2024 graduation dates, enclosure 11.3. What's the date?
It's the.
Over here, sorry, June 14. Do we have a motion to accept the graduation date of June 14?
So move, Gabe Marks.
Gabe Marks, second?
I'll second, Joe Coletti.
Joe Coletti? Any discussion on that?
So what happens if there's a snow day or do we have to move that?
It's a, it's a great question, and it's, it's the unfortunate aspect of, of, we have to set the graduation date. We have to be able to inform families of, of graduates. We also have to start working towards making sure that we reserve all of the equipment, the staging, the chairs, that are utilized, because we rent that equipment. And we have to make sure that we, we basically reserve it so that it's available when we have our graduation date. The unfortunate part of that is if we get an additional snow day in between now and the end of the school year, or two additional snow days in between now and the end of the school year, that's what ended up happening. We have graduation on the date that was just established, but the, the last day of school will be two days later or one day.
Is that the reason we wait till now to do it?
We, we push it off as long as we can.
As you can, okay, yeah.
Let's try to figure out.
Okay, all in favor of the graduation date of June 14, 2024?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion passes. Okay, first read of the policies?
So, let me just, so the first policy, just, I'll just quickly highlight these. These. These are policies that have gone to, and you have redlined versions in your board packet. The first one is 9314. It is internal board operations, it is meeting conduct. This is a policy that has not been updated for several years. And there have been substantive changes with regards to how meetings have been conducted. This actually came to my attention last board meeting when we have a policy that says, board members cannot participate in certain aspects of board meetings electronically. And so, so this is going to basically update our policy to talk about how, how board members can participate in meetings virtually, should they choose to do so. It gets into posting of meetings. The good thing is, is that we're in compliance with the rules around this. Again, it's kind of one of those things where legislation has changed. We have been up to date with legislative changes. We just now are trying to catch our policy up with the legislative changes. But I could certainly try to answer any questions that people may have.
Somewhere here, you said that we need to roll call for this extension, right?
Correct.
I read this, but I didn't really reread it with this policy, this thing, because we've seen it already.
So if you go to section or number four, A4, it says, any vote taken at a meeting during which a board member participates by means of electronic equipment shall be taken by roll call unless the vote is unanimous. That's right. So I warned Heather about that today, that's why we're making sure we're doing it.
Sure, but it's not our policy yet.
Trying to be on the balls. Trying to be on the balls.
Okay, so.
I'll just also mention, just not to get too far ahead, one of the things should we, when this is adopted as a second reading, there is a current policy which we will be able to delete, which is later in our packet, that specifically is board member electronic, electronic meeting participation at board meetings. So when we adopt and update this one next month, we'll be able to eliminate one that's in the agenda tonight for consideration for deletion. Again, there's no action in this, we don't, if there's questions. I also always say to people, if you want to, you know, reach out to me in between now and the next meeting, if you have questions or concerns about this one, I can certainly try to address them. I'll just keep moving on unless there's any questions right now about that one. The next one is 1331, prohibition against smoking. Again, this is just aligning our policy with legislative changes to include things about electronic nicotine delivery system, cannabis, electronic cannabis delivery system, all which are prohibited. And, and so we're, we would just be updating this and making sure that it fits with legislation. In a similar vein to the last policy that we discussed where adopting and revising this policy will enable us to delete other ones, there's currently a policy specifically for personnel, for staff use of tobacco products and smoking on campus or on school grounds. And there's also a separate policy for students smoking on school grounds. If we adopt the community one, the way that it's written, we can delete the one that is for personnel and for students because the community one would encompass all students, staff, visitors, anybody and everybody. But I could certainly take any questions if people have any. Well, right now, they, they're similar to one another, but basically the recommendation is, hey, listen, just, just have it under community and get rid of the others. And that way it's less to have to update.
Well, it says personnel, so does it have to say community?
Well, the community one is the one that I think I just talked about.
Right.
And so later on, there's one that is specific to personnel. So 1331.
Did it say community? Am I looking at the wrong?
1331 is community. And then later on in the packet.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, I was on the wrong page.
It's okay.
Yep.
So the next one is 4154 and 4254. This, this is a policy, so this is a policy for the reporting of suspected abuse or neglect for adults with an intellectual disability or autism spectrum disorder. We have this policy, it currently exists within the context of our policy book. Again, it's being updated to reflect legislative changes. And I would recommend that the board adopt it as, you know, again, after a second reading next month, I could certainly take questions. You know, we do interact with adults with intellectual disabilities and autism spectrum disorder. We do run transitional programs for students from 18 to 22 years old, as we are required to do by law. So there is unfortunately the chance that we might encounter suspected abuse or neglect of intellectually disabled adults.
So Colin, this is just based on the new changes?
Correct. Correct. It's really, it's, they're very non-substantive. The only one is in the second page where it talks about if an initial attempt is made to report it on the week, like, that's really the gist of it. Everything else is just kind of semantics, I really think, so.
Yeah, I was just looking at the week's attempts.
Yep. So the next one is 4180 and 4280, which is personnel. It was historically called Plan for Minority Staff Recruitment. It is now being changed to Increasing Educated Diversity. Again, you know, we were talking a little bit about recruitment earlier on in the meeting. This is something that, there were some legislative changes related to this. So it's, I think that using the term minority is falling out of favor and then people are getting into the use of, you know, diverse candidates. And I think that's a move in a good direction. Really, the only substantive change with regards to this particular policy beyond the name is with number two, the state of Connecticut developed a video training module related to implicit bias and anti-bias in the hiring practice. It is something that is available to school districts. And what we have to do is make sure that any employee that is involved in the hiring process, watch this video and make sure that that is something. So if a teacher is going to be involved in a higher, in a teacher hiring committee, we have to make sure that we're watching this because, you know, we don't want anybody's implicit or explicit biases affecting their hiring decisions. So, so that is something that we are going to make sure that we're in compliance with as we go into this hiring season.
This looks like it was old policy just from the formatting. And when we do adopt it, we might want to just reformat it a little bit, the others, the 4,000 in the middle rather than on the left.
Yeah, we can play with it, yep. All right, I will move on to the next one, which is 5545, use of private technology devices by stu-, use of private technology devices by students. You know, again, there's, there's not really substantive changes here. There's, there's mention in here about the use of AI. Again, these relate to legislative changes that have been made. I can certainly try to entertain any questions that people might have.
AI is going to be a fun ride for administrations.
Yeah, you know, I mean, I don't want to travel down a rabbit hole, but it's one of those things we're going to have to learn to live with and figure out how to make it work because, and so what we're, you know, we talked a lot about it in the beginning of the school year, conversations continue to happen. It's, it's teaching kids how to use it responsibly and not, you know, as opposed to, and my, our library media specialist behind Scott Nottingham, it's about teaching kids how to use it responsibly. That, that's, that's what we're going to have to do. Because to say you can't use it, it's going to be like saying to a teenager, hey, you can't use cell phones. Like, that's just a, it's an exercise in futility, unfortunately. So it's just about using your responsibility and making sure that you're not claiming that work as your own. Real quick, these ones, the next ones are consideration for deletion. As I said, 9405 speaks to the board member electronic meeting participation in board meetings. We can delete that with the board conduct policy being adopted. And then there are personnel prohibition against smoking and students prohibition against smoking that we can eliminate as well once we revise the community. And I think I am done talking for a few minutes. I'm pretty excited about that.
Okay, so that was a lot of first read for policies. Does anybody want to go back?
Yeah, I just have one.
Please.
For policy 1331, the prohibition against smoking. Do we have anything that prohibits like chewing tobacco or pouches or anything like that?
I give up. Policies have community.
Yeah. No.
I don't know if that's something, I mean, it's not smoking per se, but might as well throw it in there somewhere or.
I can look into that.
Because I know kids and they'll try to get around anything they can.
Yeah, what are those things that they use, like, oh, zins?
Zins? Yeah, it's a nice thing. I don't even know what that is.
It's a little pouch, it has nicotine, you stick it, it's like chew in a pouch.
And they have to spit.
I don't think so. That one is in it, it can be very highly concentrated.
I think it's a good ad.
All right.
All right, any other discussion on that before we move on? Anybody online? All right, brings us to the financials.
Okay, 11.5A and Mr. McManus and almost every. So after reviewing the statement of net position for the month ending January 31, 2024, there is a projected net favorable position of $762,409. So yes, this is an increase from last time, last month, but I, what I had the director of accounting do is, and the payroll person do is review salary and health insurance accounts to see where we can identify amounts that are not being utilized and would not be utilized till the end of the school year. And we transferred them up into the unallocated personnel line. That is why there's a huge increase there. The excess cost grant for revenue, the excess cost grant for the current year is being reevaluated by the Connecticut State Department of Education. Early projections indicate that the funding presented, percentage rate appears to be slightly less than last year. So that means last year we were received close to 80%. This year we're slated to receive 70%. So we should be getting the money this week. So at the next board meeting, I can report what we receive. So capital improvement fund, the central office rooftop unit project is underway. The unit itself has been ordered, but there is a 12-weekly time receive unit. The facilities, the condition assessment kickoff meeting was held and the assessment will begin on April 1st. Not an April fool joke, yes, it will start on April 1st. Capital non-recurring fund, there currently is, there currently is balance of $608,547, of which $544,880 has been allocated to the field project. But the field project is just slowly getting underway because we had some pickups along the way. So that leaves an available balance of $63,667. And when we add the 609, 720 that the board just voted on today, we'll have an available balance of $673,387, of which somebody's trying to allocate some of those funds. Does that answer your question? All right, are there any additional questions on the financials as I have presented them?
Can you say again, because it went kind of fast, the movement of money to the.
Oh, yeah, so.
The salary.
Yes, so normally I, what I don't do is normally I don't go through any object codes that are 1-1-2.
Right.
Because we have lots of movement in those accounts. But we've had some dollar amounts that were pretty steady there. So I asked the payroll ladies to look at it and make sure that anything that wasn't encumbered through the normal encumbrance process, if it was, looked like it was going to be free and is free, let's move it on up to the unallocated, which is the object code that ends with 100.
Oh, so it's not, it's not something I could see?
But it's a, it's a movement. But yes, so if you look at my report on page one of the big report. There's an object code that's called unallocated personnel, so.
I must not be looking at the right thing.
Yep, you're almost there. I'm a walking toy guy. So they may not have put it in the same. Okay, yep.
Oh, there's two page ones?
Yes, yes.
Okay, all right.
I'm sorry, they're all different page ones, my bad, my bad. It's a report that I combined together, I cannot erase those.
Yeah, yeah.
Sorry.
Oh, there it is, okay. All right, there we go. Thank you.
All right, and then the other section of that was the health insurance funds that either people have chosen to go other places or again, had turnover and or vacancies. And we don't need that much money till the end of June, so moved it on. Any additional questions? So hearing none, we're at 11.5B. And so this is the food service monthly sales and expenditure report. And again, it's as of the end of January, so January 31st. And we're currently reflecting a loss of $65,989.99. I'd like to tell you that it's because things are not running well, but things are running well. Our debt is not as high, so we have students that will go through the line. And there are some districts that are carrying $50,000 to $60,000 worth of unpaid or uncollected meal charges. We are not, we're not, we are not. So I'm really hoping that when the legislation gets to talking about universal feeding everyone for free, because I think this is a waste of taxpayers' time about chasing students and for meal charges, I think it's, it makes sense, especially in this day and age. But having stated that, Whitsons and I are doing a better job of communicating so that we have a better handle to see where we might end up at the end of the year, so that we don't have any surprises. But we do have a positive fund balance still, so this is just a loss that we're running this year and hopefully it'll stay in this year or rectify itself slowly. Are there any questions that anyone might have at this point?
So are you saying that most of this money comes from students who aren't paying for their lunch?
No, it's coming from everybody. So there, on the back, you'll see the revenue on top.
Yeah.
So sales and meals and à la carte, that's where we get them who pays for their meals, who pays for à la carte, staff, so like I decided to go eat, my money would go in there. Catering, so if our cafeteria food service department chooses to help, you know, let's say, graduation, if they did pay for graduation, those kind of things go there. We get supply chain grant that goes there, the state reimbursement. So the, at the end of the month, I have to claim the meals and we get reimbursement that goes in here. So that's, it picks up all of it. I don't know if that answered your question.
So is, are we not getting enough from the state? Is that what the question is? Are we not charging enough?
I'd like to say, yes, but I think we have to look at the charging and see what. So we're not allowed to set the price for next year until the federal government creates a paid lunch equity tool. And to date, they're a little behind the eight ball on that one, so it's not ready yet. So Whitson is reaching out to the state on our behalf to see if they can use last year's tool with a slight calculation to come up with a dollar amount. Because normally in April, I come to the board and I say, hey, based on the price and lunch equity tool, these are where our lunch prices should be. I'm not sure we're going to get there this year, so.
So we're not charging enough in the lunch room? Like, if I showed up to eat lunch?
Well, unfortunately, because of inflationary costs. So back in October, it was almost 9% inflationary costs. I had a look at it recently to see how much more it's gone up, but yeah, our paper goods, our food supplies, everything has gone through the roof, unfortunately, and labor costs. Any additional questions on that? Hearing none, I can move on. So 11.5C is the student activity report. Again, this is just a report for the board to be able to review. The board has fiduciary responsibilities to oversee the student activity accounts, but no. to oversee the student activity accounts, but no, you can't tell the students how to spend their life, because it has to benefit the students directly. So student councils, the clubs, they get to, they fund the, the accounts themselves and get to spend the accounts themselves. So again, everything balances with the Webster Bank account. Are there any questions that the board may have at this time?
I guess the comment, how much fun it is to read the whole list of what, what the, what the kids are doing. There's a lot in there.
Yes, yes, they do do a lot of fun stuff. Any additional questions? All right, hearing none. 11.5D is the Short Term Investment Fund Account. To date, there has, okay, so as of January 31st, sorry, I'm going to need to do that. As of January 31st, 2024, the dividend reinvested for January was $1,633.63. I also include the monthly historical rates for the month of January. And as you can see, we pretty much held steady for the month of January. Are there any questions that the board?
I'd just like to go back to the, the first one, the expenditure revenue.
Yep.
You guys responded to a couple of questions I had and sent an email today, but I really absorbed it. But the relationship with balance and coverage, that, that I'll figure out like from what was in there. The other two were more like, this is how it's always been done, but doesn't.
So, okay, so in my opinion, not that I asked anybody, but in my opinion.
What's your opinion? Now you've asked.
I have, I have lots of opinions. So if you compare the spreadsheet that I do to the report that comes out of the system, revenue is always, you're correct, notated with parentheses, which makes it look like a negative dollar amount, but it's not, it's a credit amount. When this was created, it was created, I believe, for the layperson to be able to read it so that this, it flows nicer, people understand it. And then the last column is just, that's the difference between what we've received and what is expected to be received.
Okay. All right, yeah, I, I can get that one. It's, it was more the other one is the year-to-date and.
So I run the report. You physically answered your own question, so to speak, when you were asking your question. I run the report from July 1st to the month end that I'm reporting on. So that's why the current and the year-to-date will match. If I ran the report from July 1st to, say, June 30th, then your current and year-to-date would not be the same. Or if I ran the report just January 1st to January 31st, the current would reflect only what happened in January. And your year-to-date would be different.
That's, that's what I would expect, that last one was, and I don't know if the others in the board would feel that way, but current would be, you know, since the last report, kind of, you know, and year-to-date would be year-to-date from fiscal year, not calendar year. But I just, it doesn't, there's no reason to have both numbers on there for the same every time. So I don't know if others on board would prefer that, but I know I would, have a current value that is actually the current value and the year-to-date that is done in the fiscal year. But I wouldn't change it midstream anyways. I wouldn't change it, but I would like to think of that for, you know, next, next, next school year, whatever.
And the full board has to tell me?
Yeah, my, my recommendation for something like that, Scott, is have a, Drew is the Chair of the Finance Subcommittee. I would have an offline conversation with Drew, giving him a, a level of detail as far as what you're hoping to see for a report. It could be something that's discussed at Finance Subcommittee and then come to the board.
Okay.
But I think that's the process to use.
Okay, so if there are no, if there are no other questions on financials, I am done.
Everybody good? All right, that brings us up to our committee.
You know, you still don't have to talk as long as Colin.
I tried to rush because I'm watching the clock, unfortunately.
We're not too bad. The committee reports, facilities, safety, transportation. Joe, you want to take that?
We then. No, correct.
Okay, so the next one is scheduled for March 26. Finance, Audit Compliance and Insurance. Drew?
Are we going to move that meeting?
Yeah, I haven't had a chance, even I were just talking about it today. So, but we did have a meeting where we discussed the audit, which was from the surplus and the, so basically everything that we've already covered.
Yes.
What we discussed at our last meeting.
Okay. Negotiations, Amy or Mike, is there?
You're going to hear it from me soon. That would have been set up, hopefully nurses shortly.
Policy, Gabe or Scott or Drew? Is there anything more we could say about policies?
I think we said plenty tonight.
Yeah.
I just have a question about the scheduling. That is the same date as the Hebron Board of Finance presentation. I think in terms of timing, it shouldn't conflict.
We might have, so we, I'll have to look at the, the schedule because we did have to make some adjustments to policy because when the original policy Subcommittee schedule was set, it was, I, I think we've actually, I was going to communicate with Policy Subcommittee members about it, but I think we're going to try to move it to the fifth so that we have time to get it sup, get it, or maybe, maybe this will do it. We'll make it work. We'll make it work one way or the other.
All right.
So that's fine.
Program and Communications, Scott, Amy, or Pam? Okay, so the next meeting's March 21st. And then Cave was Carrie, so there's no report on that. And we're still missing a facilitator for these, right?
Yeah.
All right. So that brings us back to public comments. Hebron, Andover and Marlboro, Community Engagement and Attendance at BOE Public Meetings is welcome. The public comment segment of the meeting agenda is set aside so the BOE may receive public comments. Proceedurally, public remarks will be limited to three minutes and citizens will be asked to identify themselves. Because the BOE is limited by the Freedom of Information Act to discuss and only matters on the agenda, the BOE is not permitted to engage in a discussion of the comments presented. Is there anybody who would like to make public comment? Anybody online? No? Good. Okay. So that brings us to calendar events.
So there's two enclosures. So there's the middle school calendar events and the high school calendar events. So it's 141A and 141B. Just, just some things. I did get a question from one of the board members asking if they could attend the World Language Under-Society inductions. My response was absolutely. Those types of ceremonies and events are really, they're not widely attended by members of the public, but if there's really any event that's taking place within the context of, you know, awards, recognition ceremony or an induction ceremony, I, you know, I would welcome to, and board members are absolutely welcome to come to that, to come to those types of events. So, so please do.
There's no time on there for location.
Yeah, so we, so if you're interested and there's not enough information, it's usually in our, on our district calendar, is, is on our website. But if you don't have specific information or you say, hey, Colin, I'm interested in attending this, just shoot me information and I'll make sure you know the time and the place and location and all that stuff. There are some things that I would just like to highlight for, for board members that are coming up. If, again, kind of, we do have a spring concert coming up for, for middle school, I'm sorry, for high school on March 21st. We also do have, on March 27th, we have our middle school music and coffee house night. And then later, I don't think it's until May is the Evening of the Arts. If you've never had a chance to attend any one of those events, I would highly recommend. Evening of the Arts is pretty much phenomenal. I mean, it's like a, it's just, it's great. We showcase, we have displays where elementary grade student artwork is displayed all the way up from all three towns, middle school student artwork, high school student artwork. We have students who perform acoustically. It's phenomenal. Kids do just basically, hey, I want to sign up and perform. I mean, it's really, really great. And then it's, the culminating part is a concert in the auditorium, which is just great. It's high school band and chorus. And it's, it was one of my first things that I came to when I came on board prior to taking the position. It was during the spring leading up to me coming on, and it's just phenomenal. So the coffee house is great, Music of the Arts is great, and our music productions are great. We also have some, a play coming up, Percy Jackson and the Lightning Thief. So just all sorts of good stuff going on.
Can you back on the crew?
That is the high school crew. I don't have specific information, but I can certainly get it. So that is the events. And then also in the, the next thing is just discipline for middle school and high school suspensions, in-school and off-school suspensions. Those are enclosures 142A and 142B.
Can they add up this?
Any, any last minute discussion on anything? Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So.
Second is thy Drew Galton.
Look at that, 850.
All in paper.
Thanks.